Me and the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to a republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For the roll call, I see all members present with the exception of Lee Schimmick. Moving on to the consent agenda, items that are known to me in routine and nature.
We have to approve the agenda.
Oh, I'm sorry. Do I have a motion to approve the agenda?
So moved.
Second.
Moved by Mike, seconded by Lee. We'll move on to the consent agenda, items that are--
Seconded by who?
Tom.
Tom.
Yeah.
All in favor?
Thank you.
I remember that. All in favor of the agenda?
Aye.
Aye.
Closed. I carry 6-0. Thanks, Mike.
It's okay.
Moving on to the consent agenda, items that are considered routine in nature, we have the check wire dispersion summary, the bank reconciliation statement for January, board meeting minutes for the February 12th, 2012 meeting, and the February 27th, 2012 work session. With that, donations as follows: $250 from 3M matching program for bridges courtesy of Tom Anderson's volunteer hours. Thank you, Tom. $40.04 from Laurel and Lett for the Hidden Oaks Middle School. Baby changers valued at $600 from Hilliard for the Edgewood School. Resignations, terminations, and renewals as listed in the report pack. Do I have a motion to accept this? So moved. Second?
Second.
Motion given by Eric, seconded by Stacy, to prove that all in favor?
Aye.
Closed. Passes 6-0. With that, we'll move on to Laker Pride Special Reunification and Laker Showcase. I welcome the mayor of Savage, Janet Williams.
Well, Janet is coming to the microphone next. Each year, we have the privilege of having our mayors come and give us a kind of the state of the state, state of the city report, and it's always a pleasure to see them here. So, welcome, Janet, first.
Thank you. I am the board superintendent Gruber, student and staff. It hardly seems like it's been a year since I was last here, and yet a year doesn't seem long enough to experience all that I have to touch on in my presentation tonight. 2011 brought a whirlwind of activity to the city of Savage. Throughout the years, staff across all departments worked on projects, proposals, programs, and services that together are furthering our community's success. It seems odd to say that, given the economy that we are in, that the city of Savage has been busy. Like everyone else, the city has been hoping for the economy to take a positive turn. But we're also realistic, and we recognize that the economy we are in appears to be sticking around for a while, but this is our new normal, and like it or not, so we make the best of it. Last year, I told you how Business Week magazine had acknowledged our city by naming Savage as the best affordable suburb in Minnesota. Well, this year, Savage turned heads on Money Magazine, which named our community as one of the top 100 small cities to live in, in America. Communities named to that list are said to stand out in qualities that American families care about most, including top-notch schools, safe streets, and economic strength. Ranked 51st, Savage noted-- was noted for our new and diverse housing stock, our mix of downtown shops and large retails, and our array of parks, wetlands, and open spaces. We at the city are proud of what we've accomplished with our partners to build this great community, and yet the city leaders and the staff know the momentum has to keep going, strong economy or not. We're doing so by adjusting to the times and making the most of what we have. This means being responsible with our taxpayers' dollars, being careful but looking forward in our decision-making, and making the most of all of our partnerships. Once again, the city of Savage held the property line on our tax levy for four consecutive years in the interest of home and business owners. This was accomplished by regularly combing through our budgets to ensure that we're spending where it's most needed and refinancing our bonds whenever possible to get lower interest rates. While we're on the subject of finances, I'd like to mention that the city has been busy with a couple of housing developments that will not only help our tax base but could also add to your district's enrollment. Utilities and streets recently were constructed in the Trace Waters development located near Lake Hanrahan, and approval has been granted for Village Commons Development near County Road 42 and 13, and we just signed the developers agreement at our last council meeting. Both could bring new students into your classrooms, and we also have heard from PLA on some possible activity there. Other active housing developments benefiting our community include the Dan Patch Trail, which is located in District 191 and came in with their Phase 2, and the senior-oriented Keystone Communities that's being built behind the library on the bluff. Another exciting development is at the City Hall campus across from the fire station. Groundbreaking will soon occur for a German software company called Bekhoff Incorporated that is locating its corporate headquarters in our city and will bring some nice new jobs. Now back to the park and recreation. Those who like to exercise outdoors may find the city's new trail guide useful. This is what we've been distributing all over, and I think it's in some of our schools. This is funded by a statewide health improvement project grant. This free guide suggests walking, running, and biking routes using the city's trails and sidewalks. Perhaps one of the most notable endeavors this past year has been the indoor sports facility planned for Savage Community Park. The city is moving towards a final decision at its council meeting next week. We've been working with firms to design, build, and operate this facility, which will provide fields for youth and adult athletic leagues that want to play and practice during the colder months of the year. The facility will also be available to members of the general public during those times when leagues' demand is at the most. But before moving on, I want to mention a couple other things that are happening at the community park. On a weekly basis, members of the Savage Social Club gather at the park's environmental learning and events center for coffee and conversation. Aimed primarily at residents aged 50 and over, the group was created last year in response to community demand. Anyone may attend free in formal meetings that are at times feature guest speakers on topics of interest to our seniors. Another program created last year that found a home at the ELC was through a legacy grant, the city was able to expand the Music in the Park series to offer weekly performances on the ELC patio throughout the summer. We expect this series to return this fall, this summer, and it will be expanding the community's exposure to various musical genres. To help promote the Music in the Park series and other city initiatives, a new digital message board has been installed at the park's entrance. Perhaps some of you have noticed this, and this was funded with a grant from the Jeffers Foundation. This sign is used to remind residents of upcoming events and meetings and to promote the McCall Pond Environmental Learning Center. We also are working with the Savage Arts Council to continue our arts presence downtown, and just this last week signed our agreement with the St. Paul Farmer's Market to again continue the farmer's market in downtown Savage, which will be starting June 3rd. Though much has been happening at the community park and downtown, something exciting is about to occur in the neighboring land to the south. An expansion of our Public Works Building will get underway this summer. This project will include much-needed space, eliminating our need to store equipment and supplies at remote locations throughout the city. As exciting as this building expansion is, it's not the only public improvement project that's taking place this summer. I know you're all aware of the work that's been being done on 13 and 101. This state project began last year and expected to be completed this fall, and when complete, we'll have a totally new interchange that is intended to ease congestion and improve safety at that intersection. Additional improvements on Highway 13 are occurring to the east of this intersection in the downtown area of Savage, and when that's completed next year, the next one on the agenda is the County Road 5 and 13 interchange in Burnsville. A number of alterations have been made to enhance this traffic flow, and we'll be closing off three or four accesses to downtown Savage that will make it safer. And of course, last summer, we had the 27 and 44 project that you're all very aware of. So I went through all this pretty quickly, and I know it's a lot to digest, but I wanted to give you a complete picture of what's happening in the city of Savage. And before I go, I'd be happy to answer any questions you may have on projects mentioned or other activities that you've heard about. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have a question?
Mayor, I was just wondering about your housing market and building permits, and you mentioned some of the projects going on, just maybe wondering more about residential in South Savage in particular.
We have seen an increase since last year, and we're seeing a little more activity, and certainly Village Commons will be coming onboard, so that should provide you with some students.
Anyone else?
Mayor, do they have a date yet set for the Village Commons for the breaking ground? Is it still supposed to be this latest spring?
No, we expect that to be this summer with occupancy next year.
Next summer, okay. Thank you.
And I'm aware of how you changed your boundaries for the possible school students there.
Yes, we wanted to do that before ground was broken so that--
Right, that was a wise move.
Families would know where their elementary school would be.
Exactly, exactly. We appreciate that. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor Meiser?
Thank you. So, Mr. Vice Chair, Board, Dr. Gruber, and staff that's here, and anybody that's watching from home, thank you very much for this opportunity to share with you a little bit about some of the activities and the priorities going on in the city of Prior Lake. And if I might, on a little something different, I actually have a PowerPoint presentation. There we connect it, there we are. So here's really, I've got about 11 slides, and my interest tonight is to cover these three key areas. I'd like to review the top three priorities for our city council and give you an update on where we at, we are with some of those. The third item, I'd like to tell you a little bit about a road project that's going to impact our community, that's the Arcadia County Road 21. And then finally, I just want to go over some of the key achievements that were noteworthy and I think worth sharing more broadly. So if you recall, even last year, and again this year, this makeup from our city council voted these three items as the most important priorities for our community. Number one was economic development. The reason that we focused on that really was because we wanted to create jobs, provide the services that our residents need, and then more importantly, provide a broader and more stable tax base for our community. Number two, we were focused on strong financial management. This was important to every member of council because we have $400 million of the community in assets, and so we wanted to make sure that we were properly looking after those assets, taking care of them, so that we can deliver all of the services that we do at the lowest cost that we can. Number three, natural resources. Upper Prior and Spring Lake have been put on the impaired list, negatively impacts our kids, our families, our communities, and those folks who even just come and recreate on our beautiful lakes here in this community. And so we've got some lakes that are impaired, we need to take care of that, and that was in our number three priority. I'd almost look at this and say, these are our blue and gold priorities. Blue, of course, return our lakes back to the beautiful blue, and gold, we'll be focused on economic development and strong financial management. So on our top priority, there's two groups that really impact economic development within our community. The first one is the Economic Development Advisory Committee. This group is primarily focused on our current existing businesses. This group of volunteer residents go out and are surveying our local businesses, both within the city and in our industrial park, to uncover some of the issues and problems that they have, not only conducting business in our city, but improving and growing their business. So then they bring those items forward to city council so that we can try and address those issues. Three things that really happened to try and improve the economic environment, I think, in our community. The first one on ordinance change was the C2, where we changed the zoning ordinance for, in our C2 district, to allow restaurants to really be viable businesses in those C2 zones. The second thing we did is we improved the sign ordinance to provide more opportunities for our business to advertise for their services. And then thirdly, we repealed some of the most stringent aspects of fire code. They were simply the volunteer aspects of the fire code that were really making it very financially difficult for any of our businesses to grow. Economic Development Authority, this is the organization that has authority within our district, or sorry, within our city, and is specifically focused on really attracting and growing new businesses to our community. As I think I mentioned last year, we really dusted off the EDA that had been parked for a number of years. We reconfigured that so it's not just made up of members of the city council anymore. So it's got two members of city council, and it's got three new good business people that had joined the EDA. With that, we are now putting forward the plans that we want to focus on for the long term. The two that I want to mention, because this one I do think actually impacts our schools and our community from the broadest perspective, I hinted at this last year, but it's fiber to the premise. Probably one of the most important investments that we can do for our city and our schools is actually increase the size of the pipe, the size of the information that we can get to our homes, to our schools, and to our businesses. Today, right now, we call broadband. We all know today that even just downloading and watching a YouTube video can have it fits and starts with broadband. There is nothing right now that's got any activity across the state that's going to focus on bringing the pipe big enough to actually allow us to stream movies, do medical care stuff at home, improve our remote education, and provide for our businesses that really need this to conduct business remotely. So we're focused on looking at that infrastructure. We've taken the first step. We've hired an outside consulting firm to do the first phase of analysis to find out what's involved through fiber to the premise within Prior Lake. Second aspect that I'd like to share with you today is we're really focused on developing a business incubator. Business incubator is designed to help startup businesses have shared resources, shared educational opportunities, mentors that are all in a single location, and incubators have been shown to be significantly more successful in helping our small businesses grow and prosper. We believe we have about 300 home-based businesses, and by having an incubator, we're going to provide some access to those home-based businesses to also build and grow and provide some great jobs and services for our community. Strong financial management. I mentioned that we have this huge infrastructure, and this city council is very focused on making sure that we properly are reserving to protect those assets and also to provide cost-effective services. I'll say in the second bullet point you see here, new city and department metrics. One of the challenges that we've recognized is we don't have as many metrics or probably as good a metrics as this council would like, and that will focus on the delivery of more cost-effective services. So we are, this year, we'll be implementing a lot of different metrics for both the city overall and also for the community, or sorry, for the departments. Sustainable Park Plan. When we went through these significant growth periods, we had a lot of parks that were just getting laid down by the different neighborhoods without a lot of forethought with respect to the services that are offered in some of these neighborhood parks. Many of them have overlapping services, which of course are just going to add to costs when you need to replace them. So our parks folks are doing a review of that. They've come forward already with the first phase of this, but we're likely to do some changes on our neighborhood parks, plans to make them more cost-effective and still provide the services that we want in our community. We redid our comprehensive financial management plan, and we also have recently added two new things to look after infrastructure. We had not had a facilities management plan in place to look after the buildings within our community, and also, we haven't invested in some basic technology like our financial software package for about 30 years, and we're literally operating this about $25 million business with $400 million in assets with software that was put in place almost 30 years ago. So we're going to update those for our community. Let me share with you a little bit of the results on where we are financially. Just on a top-line basis, you can see I'm showing what our, this is for our general fund, so this does not include our city, the sewer, public works, or sorry, like the sewer and the water, but it does include the general fund. And you can see that basically our revenue was growing over the last few years. Our projection for 2012 is about a $12 million general fund budget. Our expenditures are about 12.7 in 2012, or I should have said even, let me focus on 2011 because that's my report. We actually ran a $670,000 surplus last year, which was leading to a pretty significant general fund reserve of about $7.7 million, which is significantly above the target that we have, which is giving us flexibility to actually lower our levy next year. So overall, if I state where the city is financially, we're in great fiscal shape, maybe even a little better than we might like. That's why we're able to lower the taxes next year. You can see actually what we're doing as a result of that sort of prudent management on staff and council's part, we're going to put $700,000 back into lowering the levy. So I think for the first time in our community, we're actually going to have a smaller levy next year. I mean, our residents are hurting. I mean, this is still tough economic times, and there's generally, for about 30 to 50% of all homes have less income, less revenue, so the better we can do at tightening, you know, the spending that we do, the better for our households, and I think we've accomplished that task, and so I'm proud of my colleagues. Finally, again, on our priorities, natural resources. I mentioned our two key lakes in our community are impaired. We are looking to remove the pollutants, basically it's phosphorus and the sediments. We are pushing the community, I'll say the broader community, because there's a lot of organizations that are focused on water quality, but our goal will be to see that our lakes cleaned up and taken off the impaired list within 10 years. One keynote on this front, we are pushing forward with a new collaborative effort to explore ways to better work together between Prior Lake, Spring Lake, Watershed, the county WMO, the Watershed Management Organization, and the other cities and other organizations within scale, because this organization has been very focused at finding efficiencies, the way we work together, and now we're focused on doing that in water quality, which will probably free up more money to do more water quality projects and deliver cleaner water faster for our residents. So I mentioned an update on County Road 21 and Arcadia intersection. Our goal will be to open that avenue, the Arcadia Avenue, to a four-way access and prep downtown for future Main Avenue restrictions. What I mean by that is a write-in, write-out only. We are out for bid. Construction will occur this year. It will include some new streetlights and signage in the downtown core, and we're also going to be conducting a traffic study downtown, because as we're going to be opening up Arcadia, this is really going to change traffic patterns in the southern part of our downtown. So we're going to be doing some significant studies on that, opening up some town hall meetings and open up to the businesses and residents to have them feed in to us and help us develop the appropriate traffic patterns in our south downtown. Key accomplishments, last two slides. 2011, Prior Lake was recognized as, for, and received a conservation award as leadership of the year for doing, literally, our staff is just doing some outstanding work all over the place in water quality. We're leading not only the state, but I think the country in many of the things that our staff are doing, and it's just outstanding. We just went through a major update and revision of our 2030 vision and strategic plan. It's available throughout the city. There's about 16 touchpoints where you can find access to our new vision and strategic plan. We limited the number of priorities that we had there. We prioritized those priorities, and we provided more detail and focused and timelines on which we needed to achieve those key goals in that strategic plan. We just completed our third residential survey and results back from the community. It was pretty broad-based, but we're getting very positive feedback that we're on the right track. And finally, I wanted to highlight, we've got some of the highest transit ridership ever in our community, so our staff and working with Shockley have done a great job improving transit ridership throughout our community. Final slide. We completed two key reconstruction, reconstruction projects for streets. It's been a focus of ours, talking about infrastructure. This is one of these ones, we can't let our streets degrade so much that the cost of maintaining those is much higher, so we have elevated the amount of money that we're spending on street reconstruction so that we can take care of those assets. We did some major bond refinancing and saved well over $1.6 million, huge savings by refinancing bonds at some great rates. We expanded our tri-city tactical team, and then finally, again, I'm going to give staff credit for this, again, this scale-type effort. We're now entering into a collaborative agreement with Scott County to share some IT infrastructure, which will save us money, improve security and public safety. That's it. And once again, thank you for your time, and I'm happy to answer questions too.
Thank you. Any questions?
One name I didn't see down there for your collaboration on water quality was the Prior Lake Savage School District. Do you see any opportunities for our school district to collaborate with the city, knowing that we have a really strong environmental education program here in the district?
I was just going to say, that probably would be the area, and I think even just number one, educating our residents. I mean, I'm going to be one of those. Prior to getting involved in politics and running for office, I would commute in and out of the city. I went by these holding ponds, just thinking they were another pothole, you know, within our community that was collecting water. I had absolutely no idea what this was about and what activities I was doing was having a negative impact on the landscape. So I'd probably say from that perspective, making students aware of the impact, I mean, again, simple things, mowing the lawn, and with those cuttings going into the street, well, you know where that ends up? It ends up in our lake, and it's turned into phosphorus, which provides that algae, part of the reason that our lakes are impaired. It's runoff from the farms and from our homes. So educating our kids is obviously step one to understand the impact. If there are any other ways, I think we would welcome that opportunity too, so thank you.
Anyone else?
You know, same question about the real estate market in town, building permits, and even looking ahead, any additional talk on annexation?
Thank you. Let me start with permits, and I know I was asked this before I started, and I heard Mayor Williams, I thought for sure I was going to remember to do that, but our housing starts, we have, in our community, we have definitely passed the bottom, and we're starting to see an increase now. I think we ended up the year last year was somewhere in the 90 to 100 total starts last year, that's both single-family and multifamily. I think our single-family was about 60, 65, somewhere in that range. So we've seen an increase in activity from the previous years, and I think that's just, I mean, it's early right now, but clearly this warm weather has still got us on a positive track for this year, but we'll see what happens, if we don't still get a double dip. So I think we're expecting good health that way. We projected about an 85. We project on a little more conservative basis in case things do turn down, but we're projecting at least 85 starts again this year. My guess is would be that we're going to be up in the 100 range. Annexation, I know we have a couple of pieces that we're looking at maybe annexing into the community, but nothing really significant at this time that's going to really, you know, dramatically change the number of households.
Thanks. Anyone else?
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
We'll move on to Laker Pride, we have the Minnesota Skolastic Arts Award winners. For tonight, I know one of the winners could not make it. If Kathryn Kates, Marie Linsel, Eric Ambrose, Jack Jensen, Mason Lyle, I guess Mason Little, and the teachers, Kristy Monverin, David Euclid, and Steve Showalter, please come up.
They're on their way, and they're bringing the artwork with them. Yes. Just one. Do you want to come up over here so we can see it, so the artwork can be on, on TV? There you go. And hold them up. I want you to hold yours for sure. So, here, I'll hold this one. Okay. Do you want to start by just saying what, what these awards mean?
These awards were for, from the Scholastic Art Awards. This is a yearly thing, and this is from our region. We had three silver key winners and one gold key winner. This one is Jenna Przyliska. She is a junior, and she won a gold key for her drawing. This one is Eric Ambrose. It's a print that he did in Mr. Euclid's class. He won a silver key for. And this is Bree Linsel, and this is from her portfolio silver key. This is one of eight pieces, and she was one of sixteen out of a hundred and, I think, seventy-six entrants that won, uh, an award for a portfolio. And this one over here is Kat Cates. She graduated last year, actually, but she did this piece over the spring studio class, and she won a silver key for that.
Each of these pieces of art represent a lot of hours and commitment and dedication by our students and our staff for this quality of work. There was an award ceremony that was held a few weeks ago that Mr. Lund attended, as well as, I'm sure, he was there too, and our other teachers, representative, representatives of this fabulous artwork that our students at the high school are accomplishing. So, our very best wishes to you. Congratulations, Bree, and the one student that's here tonight, so we're thrilled to have you here, and your beautiful portfolio. And we have a certificate for you. And thank you for being here.
Good.
We'll move on to Laker Showcase, World Savvy at Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks. And Holly Bartholomew will be the presenter, and I know she brought a couple of the teachers with her.
And students.
And students.
Wherever you'd like.
All right. We'll, we'll let the boys showcase. Um, when we were asked as coaches to come and present about World Savvy, we felt that it would only be appropriate for the winning team in the junior division to come and speak about their experiences. But just to give you a little idea of what World Savvy is about, it is a, an organization which prepares a generation of leaders to learn, work, and thrive as responsible global citizens in the twenty-first century. It promotes critical thinking, teamwork and collaboration, media literacy, and research and present, sorry, presentation. On March third, we took three teams from the two middle schools to compete on challenge day, and in the next couple of weeks, we have four more teams competing in the online division. So, we're excited to see how they'll do. And so, we'll turn it over to our winners.
So, at World Savvy, we got to choose a topic on either waste, food, or water. We chose waste, and more specifically, electronic waste, which is anything that is any electronic that isn't being used. So, we decided the problem was that electronic waste was being disposed of improperly. So, we found the local problem, which, and a national and global problem. And with those, we found information on many sources, and then we got information for our Knowledge to Action Plan.
For our Knowledge to Action Plan, it's basically, we take all of the research that we conducted, and we form a plan that we can help to, like, solve the problem or kind of, like, make it become less of a problem. So, what our plan is to do is we will raise awareness in our district if, um, World Savvy gives us, like, a grant, so we can, like, tell people about this problem. And then also, we, um, will have an electronic waste drive at our school to collect it, so it can be properly disposed of by a company called Tech Dump in Plymouth, Minnesota.
There was also judges that came around to judge our presentation, and what they did was first, they all came around and gathered around our board, and, and they did this with all the, with all the other exhibit boards, um, for the middle schools. And, um, first, they watched our video, which we don't have here today, but they were really, like, zoned into that, because it showed how, um, uh, how e-waste is supposed to be recycled properly. And then it also showed how e-waste is sometimes disposed of to Ghana. Um, and they were all looking at that. And then what they did was, they read everything on our board, and they read our Knowledge to Action Plan and annotated bibliographies, and they made, or they made corrections on it if we did something wrong, or they, um, wrote down questions that they had for us. And then what, they asked us questions about our board, like how, um, how long it took and other stuff. Also, uh, there was people that came around and add.
Oh, we, we, uh, we, we also had various keynote speakers and people that were there. First of all, Mark, Mark Dayton showed us, and each one of us actually got to shake his hand, so that was pretty cool. Uh, and, and, and then also, Senator Amy Clovishaw was there as well. So, we didn't actually get to shake her hand, but she was there. So, it's kind of cool. Um, and then we als, and then at the end, we also had some, some students that had gone on a three whip, a three-week trip to Bangladesh that was funded through World Savvy, and they told us about, about Bangladesh and how they, you know, how they, so, yeah.
Also, during the day, we participated in the Action Roundtable discussion, which is, we were all split up into different groups with people that we did not know at all. Uh, we had to read the material that was given to us, and then as a group, we had to come to a decision. So, for the material, um, we had, there was four organizations we had to read about, and then as a group, we had to figure out which one we wanted to give ten thousand dollars to. So, that was challenging to work together, but it was fun.
Can they introduce themselves? Can they let us know who they are?
Yeah. Would you tell us?
Sure. Um, I'm Brayden. This is Adam, Kayden, Michael, and Quinn.
Guys, could I ask you a quick question? That's a lot of work. How long did it take you, and how did you guys come together and figure out the topic and, and work together on it?
Um, well, we worked on it for about seven, eight weeks?
Yeah.
Seven weeks. Um, we worked on the weekends, during school, after school, during prime time.
It's a lot of work. Thanks, guys.
Some question. You said you, you made a video?
Yeah, we made it. No, we don't have it with us.
Is it possible to get that on the website?
The video? Did you do, make the video?
Did you guys make it, or did you?
It's a PowerPoint.
Oh, PowerPoint? Okay.
And can I ask what you learned? What do you think is your biggest learning from this whole project?
Oh, one major thing that we learned from this was how to work in a team. Uh, we've never really done like a big project like this that we had to do with five people. Uh, that was very challenging at times. Um, and we also learned how to work in a team with people that we are not familiar with. So, and, so for, like, the Action Roundtable, so we can get used to that for when we grow up and have to do that in our jobs.
Thank you.
Did I miss the beginning, or did you say what award you had won there? I don't think that came out.
We won the junior division for exhibits.
Best exhibit. Very nice.
Thank you. Maybe you could turn it around so the board could see the exhibit. And teachers, do you want to introduce yourselves and have anything else to say?
I'm John Wobbie, and I'm their social studies teacher who worked with them with this project.
I'm Holly Bartholomew, the second grade English. I had the ways in class and then helped support them.
And I'm Brett Stoff. I teach Hidden Oaks, GRP. We also, obviously, in this project, we had one group also compete there.
And you're kind of like the synergy coordinator, how we're able to assist both these programs.
Very nice.
Very nice. Congratulations.
Thank you. Congratulations.
Thanks, guys.
Just hang on to your first question.
We'll move on to Laker Showcase with History Day. Nathan Dapper and Craig Mertens.
Well, good evening. Uh, first, I'd just like to say congratulations. You guys did a very good job presenting. Uh, it's not easy. You guys did a really good job. So, uh, I'm Nathan Dapper. I teach eighth grade US history at Twin Oaks. Uh, and this year, our students, both at Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks, had an opportunity to advance, or participate in, uh, History Day, which was a national competition. Minnesota has a very strong presence as far as the fifty states go in participating in History Day. About thirty thousand students throughout the state of Minnesota participate in History Day, and our advanced students were able to take advantage of that. At Twin Oaks, we had seventeen students move on to either state or regionals.
And at Hidden Oaks, we had eleven students move on to regionals, and from that group, six will move on to the state competition.
What, what History Day is, is kids are given a theme, and they're given an opportunity to basically choose what kind of format they present their information. Um, the, the different categories are exhibit boards, kind of what we just saw, documentary, performance, a kind of skit or a play, writing a research paper, making a documentary. Students are able to kind of choose their vehicle to deliver their information.
We, uh, we started this, this year just with our advanced classes, and so I had thirty-nine students participate in. You had thirty?
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. So, um, thi- this is really a project where kids really can dive in and experience a research project at a, at a level that they've quite possibly never done before. And we're very proud of our students this year. We had, uh, we had quite a few very nice exhibits. We held a, a, a day at Hidden Oaks for parents to come in and take a look. And, um, Ms. Teller helped us through the process, and also would like to thank Mr. Kuznetsov and Mr. Edwards for their help kind of guiding us through the project. We, uh, we weren't really sure how to dive into it. This year was a pretty big project, but it went very well, and we're very proud of our students who, who not only aren't moving on, but especially proud of those students who are moving on.
Any questions you guys have for us?
Tom, Tom?
You said there's, there's quite a few students that moved on. Is that normal or unusual, especially for the first year? I mean, it's, to me, it seems like, uh, that's a heck of an accomplishment.
Yeah, I think the philosophy of, of the cause of state runs History Day is to get as many kids participating as they can in the next level. So, we had to fill in surveys about how many kids we had participating, and then the categories they chose, and they sent us, um, you get this many slots to send kids on with, or send us many projects on with. Um, and there are four different regions, and we were in a newer region, so there's about ten schools competing at our region.
How do you determine which, which move on to the next level?
We enlisted the help of, uh, us, uh, quite a few professional judges, or at least people that we trusted, some history people, some community people, some school people. And through kind of a combination of, of those judges, they determine who would go to the regional level. And from that point, History Day takes over. They have the judges. So, our kids that went to the regional level were really judged by quite a few historians, professors from different areas.
And that's already happened?
That's happened, yeah.
Okay.
Has, has the state happened yet?
No, the state will happen April twenty-ninth.
Maybe you said, or, and I missed, but what, what's the aspect of history? I mean, is it anything from yesterday on back, or is there a timeframe or what?
What, what they recommend is twenty years or later. So, anything within the, you know, the most recent history is really hard to judge the historical value of. Even twenty years is, is pretty, pretty tough. Um, the, each year, there's a theme that comes up. This year's theme was revolution, reaction, reform. And so, we decided that we were going to let our kids kind of pick any topic they want, whatever they were interested in. So, one of them, we motivated to spend the time researching. And so, we had projects that ranged from, you know, opening Japan up to Western trade, to Cuban Missile Crisis, to Boston Tea Party. Uh, so, it was, it was kind of fun for us to read about something that we don't usually read about, and it helps students kind of research those topics. And so, is that answer your question?
Yeah, absolutely.
Anyone else? Is it sad when something that happened in your lifetime is classified as history?
I just had one, and that was of the, of the presence, they had different categories they could choose. Was there one category that our students excelled in that most of those, or is it a smattering of all the different kinds of presentations?
I think the majority of the students went with the exhibit board. Um, I have one, two students moving on that did a group board, but I also have one student moving on who did a, a documentary that was very, very well done for, for an eighth-grade student. I actually had two that were very well done. One was honorable mention, and one actually made it to state. And for the work that these eighth graders are doing with documentary filmmaking is just quite amazing, so.
And are they doing it all in the classroom or classroom home with Ms. Teller?
Home. A lot of them went to universities to do research, the history center research. They had interviewed professors. I had, this young lady actually called a professor at Penn State and did some research with him. So, I mean, they're just, they're diving into this and really making the best out of it.
So, it's something you'll do again?
As we know it now, so, yeah.
Yeah, yeah. Good time to ask. Yes. Congratulations.
Well, thank you. Congratulations.
Sharing.
With that, we have open forum time set aside for anyone to address the board. Do we have anyone who would like to address the board? With that, seeing none of move on to personal items. Matt?
All right. Uh, first, I recommend the following candidates for employment and if seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion? Motion by Eric?
Second.
Second by Stacy. Any discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I carry six-zero.
And second, I present the following lead of absence and if seeking board approval. And second, I present the following lead of absence and if seeking board approval.
Do I have a motion to accept leave of absence?
So moved.
Second?
Second it.
Motion by Tom, seconded by Rich. Any discussion? Do, do we have to split that off as a second vote as the, the rescind?
I'm sorry, uh, yes, I, I believe that we do each votes, uh, but, but secondly, I'd like to present, um, the, the rescinding of a previously, uh, approved lead of absence.
Uh, so with that, do we?
I'm, I'm, we need a new motion. Tom? Second.
Any other further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero.
And next we have, I'm presenting four district retirements, um, four teachers who have, uh, notified us that they're intending to retire for the next year, uh, have one hundred and twenty-four combined years of service. And, uh, first is Michael Cooper from the high school with thirty-two years of service. John Gertman from the high school with thirty-one years of service. Ron LeKelt, uh, from the high school with twenty-five years of service. And Susan Matthews from Red Tail Ridge with thirty-six years of service. And, um, I wish all of our retirees the best as they go on to their future endeavors here in the next chapter. But I would like to just make a special note that for, uh, the first three years that I, uh, served in the district, I worked quite closely with John Gertman and, uh, would just like to, uh, say that I have thoroughly enjoyed working with him and again, wish him all the best in the future.
Do I have a motion to accept the approval of retirements? So moved. Moved by Eric, seconded by?
I'll second it.
Mike? Any further discussion? Go ahead. Comments? Please.
Go ahead.
Um, I would just like to, uh, commend each of these four teachers for the service that they've given. It's been exceptional. And the generations of students that, lives that they've touched has, uh, you know, it will go on and on and on. So, we appreciate each of the contributions that, um, these four retirees have given to our district and the commitment, uh, that they have had to our students and families. So, congratulations to each of them.
Well, I, you know, I think this is where we missed Diane Zeman because she was the historian, but, uh, um, you know, I have gotten to know a few of these teachers. Um, unfortunately, I didn't get a chance to meet, uh, Mrs. Matthews, but, uh, Mr. LeKelt had my son Cam and, uh, Cam thoroughly enjoyed his class. He was a, a teacher that really, um, uh, pushed his students, uh, to excel and exceed. And, and with that, uh, I've seen the students really get a good sense of science, um, and, and be motivated to pursue careers in science. Unfortunately, Mr. Cooper, Mr. Gertman knew me when I was in high school and, uh, and, and my friends. Uh, Mr. Cooper was a great guy, um, very authentic, somebody you could, uh, you could always approach. I probably knew Mr. Gertman a little bit better. Uh, he was a football coach when I, when I went through school and, and certainly had a long, a long run as a basketball coach here. And I also had him for, uh, American history and, uh, really piqued an interest in me, uh, uh, that's, that lasts today, um, that I've encouraged to my kids that even got them to go, uh, out to the, you know, to the Washington DC trip. So, uh, not only have these teachers spent a lot of time here, um, but as you said, tou- touched a lot of lives and motivated a lot of students to either pursue careers in their area of interest or, or maintain lifetime interests and, and, um, they'll be, they'll be missed.
Anyone else? I'd just like to commend these for the service. I mean, I, I saw that when the board minutes came out and added up right away to one twenty-four and thought, it's amazing. It's a lot of years. So, thank you. Um, with that, uh, we have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero.
And lastly, I'd like to present the following job description. This is a job description for the Community Education Summer Instructional Swim Program Assistant Coordinator, which is a bit of a mouthful. And this is a new job description, but it, uh, but an old position. And so, the position is not new. We've been paying this as a stipend and the position's kind of changed over time in the way that we've used this person. But, um, uh, this is a service that has been, uh, that we've been utilizing in this district for, for a very long time. But we wanted to make sure that it was clear what the roles and responsibilities were for the position as we're trying to go through and make sure that we're cleaning up all of our job descriptions and making sure that they're, uh, current and reflect the positions that we currently have in the position. So, with that, I'm seeking board approval.
Okay. With that, do I have a motion to accept the description? So, so moved?
Okay. Second.
Tom, second by Tom. Any, uh, discussion, questions?
Uh, it says terms of employment, salary and work here is determined by the board, but I'm assuming that that's paid through the program and community ed.
That's correct, yes.
Thanks.
That's the, the stock language.
Anyone else? Does I have a motion to second for the, uh, approval of the job description? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? That carries six zero. Uh, we have no, uh, old business. Moving on to new business. The, uh, joint powers agreement with the city of Savage. Julie?
Good evening, board members and Dr. Gruber. Um, this evening, I'm bringing forward the joint powers agreement that we have with the city of Savage, um, with our school resource officer. We share some time with the city of Savage. They employ the school resource officer and then we buy their time back from the city of Savage. And we have a long history of working with the city of Savage for this school resource officer. Um, this is for the next five years. Um, the cost is the same for next year as it is for the current year and after that, it does increase to three percent each year. And we pay for these funds from our school, um, Sage Schools levy. And so, we're able to fund that project specifically with that levy. Any questions?
Do I have a motion to accept the joint powers agreement? By Eric, second.
Second.
By Stacy. Any other further questions, discussion?
I'll just say, uh, you know, we've had this in our district for a long time and, and, uh, these resource officers really become a part of the school and get to know the students and they're an extremely valuable resource, both to us and our administration and, and our community. So, I, I think this is a terrific idea and I'm glad we've got a long-term commitment.
Yes. Anyone else?
I, to echo that and, uh, I think it's a very good commitment with, with the community. Look forward to the next five years with that and look forward to Prior Lake's agreement also.
So, any?
And we'll have one coming forward from the city of, uh, Prior Lake as that expires and bringing that forward. With, uh, that, that is at our middle schools, sharing the campus between Twin Oaks and Hidden Oaks.
With that, I have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. MBE integration revenue budget approval.
Good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Dr. Gruber, you have in your, uh, board packet a revenue sheet from the Department of Education. Uh, this is something that comes to the board each year for your approval to access integration dollar, uh, or integration funds from the Department of Education. Uh, with these dollars, we, uh, enter into a partnership with Shakopee and Jordan School Districts. We use these dollars to, uh, increase educational opportunities focused on student achievement for students or with, uh, diverse student populations. Uh, we are considered a racially isolated school district and so, as a result, we have the opportunity to work, to access these dollars and work with our partner school districts, Jordan and Shakopee on goals in order to provide opportunities for kids to come to Prior Lake Savage, uh, programs that we have that are, that are focused on our goals as well as Prior Lake Savage area school students accessing programming at those schools. Um, in the past, uh, these dollars have been, um, allocated for EcoCamp that, which has been a summer program. Um, while EcoCamp will continue to, to happen in Prior Lake Savage, uh, that's become more, uh, uh, community education funded type of program or gone, gone through community education. Uh, we're now in the process of planning or developing a new plan focused on goals with, with Shakopee and Jordan. One focusing on, uh, first of all is increasing our Native American liaison time for direct service for students as well as collaboration together on planning and programming. Uh, second goal, uh, centers on the math expressions curriculum at our elementary level. Shakopee School District has implemented math expressions and as you know, we will be implementing math expressions for our K-five students. We're, uh, bringing in a goal into this too so that our, uh, staff, uh, or at least so that our curriculum groups can work together a couple times next year, uh, on planning and implementation of this curriculum. We're also looking at, uh, extended learning time for our summer school, uh, making sure that, uh, one of the big things that we always struggle with, with our summer school programs is making sure that kids can get to those programs to get service. So, our third goal centers on transportation and providing transportation to families so that, or to students so that they can come to those classes in the summertime. Um, the fourth goal is around diversity training for our staff. We've started that, uh, last year um, and looking to increase those opportunities for our staff members. And our fifth goal centers on, uh, EC, uh, FE, Early Childhood Family Education Families and providing transportation to attend our classes before and after school, so.
Are there any questions? Do you feel for board approval on that? Okay. Uh, with that, uh, do I have a motion to accept the integration revenue budget worksheet for fiscal year thirteen? Moved by Stacy.
And I will second that.
Seconded by Rich. Any other questions? So, in?
I would just add that the, the integration dollars continue to remain in, in our, uh, available to us this year, but the focus has changed, uh, and is allowing us to do a focus on student success and looking at those, um, small groups of students that are diverse within our community, within Shakopee and within Jordan, where those commonalities are so that we can pull them together. For instance, on the, uh, American Indian, we all have, um, uh, the res- a very limited resource, uh, uh, support for our students. And so, this would allow those three people to work together and look for ways, uh, success, uh, measures, uh, but also allow them to have more time with our students and families. Um, and focusing on those areas where, uh, like with math expressions that, um, our, the teachers in Shakopee have been using this program longer than we have. They, we went actually to visit them last year. So, they've had a couple of years. How do they meet the needs of their diverse populations and what can we learn from them? So that when we're implementing it, we're implementing it with, um, fidelity to the program, but also looking for ways to meet those needs of those diverse learners. So, we're very excited. This is just two examples of ways that we're working together and developing a, a common plan together that will be sent to the state for their review and approval.
So, with that, I have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero.
Thank you.
On to policy.
Are you ready? We have seven policies to look at tonight. Um, all of these policies have come to the board, uh, both here at this table and then at our study session that happened just a few weeks ago for a discussion and review. The first policy is policy two thirteen, school board committees. And that is on page thirty-four of your packet. And this committee was just updated to reflect the current, um, language that we're using in our district instead of saying buildings and grounds. We've called it our facilities committee. So, we've changed that language there. Um, as we walk through this, it's, they're very minimal, um, changes. We did make an, an adjustment, um, under C, um, three C. Oh, this is going back. Three, uh, C, uh, external committee and agency representatives. But again, it's a very minor change. Um, so this, this entire policy comes to, um, for review and a vote.
Do I have a motion to accept policy two thirteen?
So moved.
Stacy's second by Eric. Any further discussion? All those in favor of, uh, policy two thirteen? Say aye.
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 Opposed? That carries six zero. Policy five twenty-four.
Yes. Policy five twenty-four is the student use of information technology. We tried to clean this up and make it more user-friendly for our, our public. Um, and, and in so doing, uh, includes social media in this policy. Um, so you will see some of the pages that have been, uh, crossed out and then some pages that have been, um, ad- adapted to, to meet, uh, our needs as we move forward. Um, what have I missed on that, Kristy? Anything? I think that's basically it.
Do I have a motion to accept policy five twenty-four?
So moved.
Tom, second?
I'll second it.
Seconded by Mike. Discussion on that? Hearing no discussion, um, have motion to second to approve policy five twenty-four. All those in favor?
Aye. Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Policy two oh eight.
Policy two oh eight is the development, adoption and implementation of policies. And we've had good, robust discussions about, uh, uh, paragraph number four, about using and revising this policy to reflect going from one board, official board meeting a month and one study session a month to make sure that our policy review is, um, uh, clear and robust and yet gives us some definition. So, the change in language now on number four is proposed is the introduction of any new or revised policy shall be submitted to the board for the purposes of discussion and review, revision. Board action will only be taken at an official board meeting. And that is the big change, um, that we're proposing, the policy committee is proposing for policy number two oh eight.
Do I have a motion to accept policy two oh eight?
So moved.
Then I will second that motion.
By Rich. Discussion?
Sure, I'll make a comment. You know, I'm not entirely comfortable with this policy yet. I, I think it presumes that we're making, uh, we're doing a first reading at a board workshop, which is an official first reading where what we've typically done is, is a reading in the open public, televised, covered by the, by the press where, uh, then the community has a chance to weigh in back on us. I think too, it also presumes that, um, this pilot that we're running today will be the ongoing standard in the future. And I don't know that we've necessarily come to that agreement yet, so it seems somewhat early to be amending the policy to accommodate that. So, those are the only two, uh, concerns that I have with it.
Other discussion?
I'm comfortable with it. But I, I mean, I think even what we're approving today is, you know, like the very first one with school board committees. I mean, that's a, almost a cosmetic change that, that I, I mean, I agree. I think for the policies that have more substance, I, I think this, we, as we talked last time, gives us as a board the opportunity, if we're not comfortable, um, passing it, if we only had the opportunity to see it at a board study session. And, and I certainly would move if I felt that there was a policy that we needed more time. I would feel comfortable with this language to say, you know, I propose that we, uh, pull it off the agenda or whatever, um, as far as the approval, so. But I, I mean, I hear what you're saying. I just, I guess I think it's time for us to move on it.
I agree.
I feel comfortable. It doesn't limit us to two readings.
Correct. Correct. And I think that was what came out of this was if it is something that there's a concern, a deep concern, uh, that it could be brought before the board a couple times, so.
And I, I think we do that now. I mean, like, a number of these policies have been through us, you know, three, four times. So, it's not really changing anything that we're doing.
Any other discussion? I have a motion to second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Policy six twenty-one dot one, weighted grading system.
In this one, uh, Mr. Hornberg is going to address.
Good evening. Again, there is a policy on weighted grading system. It's in your board packets. There was a minor change. There was a minor change to the, uh, to the policy. It, uh, basically has been changed to reflect our current practice, which is students who take weighted courses and receive weighted grades, it will allow their grade point average to go. to go above four point oh, so that is.
Do I have a motion to accept the policy six twenty-one dot one?
So moved.
Stacy. Right, Eric. Any other further discussion? Mike.
And I know we talked about this maybe at one point. I think the only question this opens up while the statement is there, that the weighted courses are identified, do we have it anywhere stated explicitly what qualifies a class? I know in general, I believe they've been the AP level classes and others, so, and I wonder, should that be at least something procedurally that at the high school we've got documented if we don't already?
If there are courses that are weighted, as you, as you point out, they are typically our advanced courses, DSCO courses, we could certainly put in or add something to this policy that would be debated with what's the criteria.
And I'm not necessarily suggesting it's got to be policy level, but I think at least if it's somewhere so that there's a clear guideline or whatever, I think, you know, as we do with many of our other policies, that then in the execution, it's, you know, here's this, you know, I just throw that out for suggestion or, you know.
If I could, I think Mr. Lund, when we discuss it, is any course that has a review by an outside agency?
Or an advanced course, because our only courses we have that are weighted that are not are our honors courses. All the other courses are A B college and schools, something that has a standard curriculum that goes beyond our halls. The courses are all identified in the course manuals, what is weighted, the courses that are not statewide or nationwide standardized are our honors courses, but I have no problem getting some type of fervor in there.
Exactly. I mean, and I believe, Rich, you rightly asked last time, as far as are the weighted courses skewed, if you will, just because of the nature of what's offered towards one discipline or the other? And so, you know, I think that's something worthwhile to make sure we're not having unintended consequences, which can happen sometimes, so.
Would that, should we withdraw that and rework that?
No, I feel comfortable still approving the policy. I just am putting that out as a.
High school still comfortable with policies written? Okay. I have a motion to second for policy five, I'm sorry, six twenty-one dot one, weighted grading system. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Policy five thirteen, curriculum acceleration.
And again, Mr. Holmberg is going to address this?
Policy five thirteen is on curriculum acceleration. It has had a couple of revisions to it. It, there are two main things I'd like to point out. One is that in addition to the parents expressing an interest for curriculum acceleration for students, we've also listed in there that teachers can request the opportunities for acceleration in students and what they were, what they're seeing from student performance. And we inserted the use of what's called the Iowa Accelerations field, and essentially that's a tool that a team or committee would use to discuss student academic or social characteristics in order to help them make recommendations on student placement relative to accelerated setting or class. So those are the, really the two main changes that are in the policy for.
I have a motion to accept policy five thirteen. So moved. Moved by Tom. Second by Stacy. Any discussion? Do I have a motion to second to approve policy five thirteen? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries six zero. Policy five fifteen, protection, privacy, and student records.
This one I'm going to take. Protection, privacy of student records is a longstanding policy that we've had. We have some revisions that reflect our federal and state statute that we're putting in place, and that is the underlying portions on page fifty-five or under section, general, general statement of policy E, data privacy. And it has to do with the directory information that will be included and must be included and shared, given written notice to the district. And then on C is use of student photos in social media, again, addressing the changes that we see in our social media and having parents be aware of that and with an opt-out option.
Now, is this the first time this one has actually been read at a public meeting like this?
No, I think we did last time.
We did it last time.
We did last time.
Okay.
So we've actually, this is the third reading.
Okay. And the reason I'm asking is because I know that the opt-out is going to be a change, and so I haven't heard anything from anybody in the community on concerns with that, but it is a change, so.
Yep.
Kristy, have we heard from anyone?
No, the, the opt-out is new for social media and internet use, correct. So I've not heard anything. There will be, should you approve it, we will be educating our parents on that this spring. Principals will be promoting this with parents, they're aware of it.
Should I ask a question now? Okay, Mike follows up. This form, the opt-out form, where is that located then? Will this be in student handbooks or?
That would be in student handbooks, correct.
Okay.
And we would also email it to families.
Okay.
And for families that don't have an email registered with us, we'd be mailing that to them.
Because I'm a little bit concerned about the new opt-out and the social media and all the news stories you hear about the incidences with students, with the social media, so I think communication is going to be essential.
Absolutely.
With our parents, so.
And also teacher training. To make sure that, that our teachers are using social media in the proper ways, which will, they do, and we will continue to reinforce that in their, what purposes they can use social media and what is appropriate and what isn't.
Do I motion to accept policy five thirteen?
So moved.
Stacy. Second.
Second.
Second by Tom. Any further discussion?
I just feel like, for personal reasons, I need to abstain from this vote.
Okay. With that, any further discussion? I have a motion to second. All those in favor of policy five thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Carries five, zero, and one. Policy five fourteen dot one, chemical use and abuse for students.
Yes. This policy, you will recall, we approved just about two years ago. It was in the summer of two thousand and ten, after our cities had adopted a social host ordinance. We wanted to follow suit. We're very concerned about student survey results indicating that our students at our high school level might be using and abusing alcohol and drugs, and we wanted to encourage an environment of respect and one that is free of those, of those substances. So we did this, put together this chemical use and abuse policy, and then we also have a set of procedures that you'll find at the back of this policy. We found out this year that we had some inconsistencies between the procedures that are being followed and the policy itself. So we wanted, we took this back to our, to our policy committee. We had a parent come in and share with us his concern about that lack of consistency and asked us to review this again. We had long discussions with our policy committee and with Mr. Lund, our high school principal, as well as Mr. Eric Rodine, our athletic director, about what is happening in our high school and the impact that this policy is having on our students, the positive impact as well as any negative. And we have aligned the policy wording with the procedural, procedure that is attached to the policy so that there isn't any inconsistencies and students and families know exactly what consequences happen as a result of an offense. So there aren't any changes on the first two pages, it is on the last page of the policy under school district action. And then that particular section, number four, it references the extracurricular and co-curricular behavior regulations for further student, school district action, and that then goes directly to the procedures. And this is the third reading. We had our first reading at our last formal meeting, we talked about it at the study session, and it's back tonight for action.
Do I have a motion to accept policy five thirteen dot one?
So moved.
Stacy.
I will second that motion.
By Rich. Further discussion? Seeing none. All those in favor of policy five thirteen, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That carries six zero. Administrative report, superintendent's.
Yes. I wanted to bring up an email that I had to make sure I have it in front of me. There's been lots going on in the last, the last month actually, that we're very proud of. First of all, just last week, or two weeks ago, we found out that our marketing video that was completed last, series of videos completed last summer that are available from our website, on YouTube, and on the Scott County website. I have won the state award for MINSBRA for the STAR Award, a very prestigious award, and we'll be receiving that this Friday at the MINSBRA MASA Annual Spring Conference, and Kristy is to be commended for her work in coordinating that and getting that off the ground. We're very proud of our marketing videos and even without the award, they stand on their own. So we were very pleased to have, to receive that news a few weeks ago and look forward to this Friday, and I think Todd is going to join us.
Yes.
And so we're, we're looking forward to that. That's always, always great news, when we are recognized for some good work that we've accomplished. In talking about accomplishments, our students continue to excel in all areas of work, both in school and out of school, and during the co-curricular and athletics have just been really hitting the mark on a variety of different sports and talents, and we're very proud of them all. We just learned today that Justin Haycraft, Haycraft has been nominated for Swimming, Diving Coach of the Year, and that one of the students, one of his leaders, Justin Robrock? Lee?
Kyle.
Kyle Robrock is a swimmer that is also being nominated for Student Athlete of the Year in Swimming and Diving. So, I mean, just think about, that's just one sport. Each of our sports, each of our activities has been working hard, and you saw that tonight with History Day and World Savvy, that there are all kinds of opportunities our students are being able to access and excel. This past weekend, our robotics team, which we know is extremely positive in their response, they, I was at the middle school tournament just a few weeks ago, and our varsity team was coordinating the entire event, emceeing it, working with students and with different teams to make sure their robots worked. And this past weekend, they went to the state tournament in Duluth, and again, for the fourth year in a row, they have won the chairman's award. They also took home first place in the whole competition, and then finally, they received a third award, the Innovation and Control Award, for, for an advanced pressure-sensitive system in a crucial mechanism in our robot. So they, they will now go on to other regional and then to the world, which happens in Kansas City in a few months. So we're very proud of them. Just one example of the kinds of excellence that we see in our students, both in school and out of school, and are, are very excited, this is very exciting news for our students that have worked very hard on their robot. They have also posted a video on YouTube of the last championship minute, two minutes, that I will forward onto the board so that you can see that. It's very exciting. So that's been going on. Our own Leigh Shimick, who isn't with us tonight, was just named our scale treasure coming up for two thousand twelve thirteen, and so she will continue to be involved in scale, and we're looking forward to that. Then next week, a week from this Wednesday, is the MSBA Visit to the Capitol Day. I know that Rich is going to join me, and anyone else that can, will be visiting with our legislators in the afternoon on that day. In the morning, there'll be presentations. And I know the students were very disappointed I didn't call a snow day last week, and I'm very sorry about that, but two inches of slush did not, did not make this day snow day for us, and I didn't realize how sad everyone would be with that news until about seven in the morning, when I started getting the phone calls about how sad people were. But it, it is always a difficult decision. I want you to know that student safety is my number one priority, and I was assured by our transportation director and our bus companies that the buses could run safely, and, and they did for that day. So that was obviously our only chance probably, knock on wood, for a snow day this year, so we have now gone for the entire year without even a late start. So if it really gets to be seventy, I think it'll be over.
There is still the boys' basketball tournament.
There is always the boys' basketball tournament, and we could get another, another chance at it, but it isn't looking like it, and I probably shouldn't say that at this point, because it could come back, but at any rate, we have that. March fourth through tenth was the school social worker week, and I sent a commendation to our school's social workers, who all do such a great job on behalf of our students and families and our schools, and make a difference in children's lives over and over again. So I want you to know that, and that is all I have tonight.
Thank you. Any other administrative reports?
Good evening. I just wanted to update the board and the community about the results of the improvement that we have seen in the state's budget outlook and how that affects our district. And many of you may have heard by now that we have been receiving only sixty percent of our funds. They have, because of the increase in the budget forecast, that has improved to sixty-four point three percent of our funds that we're receiving. And that doesn't mean that we get more money. We get the same amount of money that we received in the past, it just means that we get our money a little bit sooner than, than they had anticipated. And so the shift has improved, so we'll get that money a little bit earlier. In addition to that, I just wanted to give you a little bit of update about what is out there in the legislation, in legislation and bills right now that they're talking about that would affect education. And one of the other things is to move us back to seventy thirty for next year. We are slated to have sixty forty. I'm sure that will stay at that sixty-four point three, but they could possibly move us back up to seventy thirty, which would again help with our cash flow. And it prevents us from having to borrow money in the future to meet our monthly obligations. And there are also a couple of things that are minor, more towards community education, that they'll remove the twenty-five percent fund balance restriction. There's a bill out there to do that, and there's also a bill out there to remove the requirement that districts get approval from the MDE to make capital purchases with our food service dollars. So those are the only three things that really are big right now that I've heard that are affecting education.
Any other administrative reports? Moving on to board reports. I said just have the one announcement about the building, well, facilities committee meeting the twenty-second. All, all board members are welcome to come. It's a change. Do we have a new date on that?
We don't have a new date, but that will, we are not going, that's been delayed.
That's been delayed, okay.
So we'll move that back a month.
Sounds good. Any other?
I'll just say, I had the opportunity to attend the celebration for the boys' wrestling, finishing third in state. It was a great event. Coach Block and his, and his staff did a great job of recognizing the boys, and it was, it was well done, and I think it was our best finish ever, so congratulations to the program. And then boys' basketball, I think disappointing loss in overtime, but a good season.
Kristy, I think we, okay. Future events, we have the Sage Academy Parents Night, March twenty-second at Westwood, six thirty, and a board work session, March twenty-sixth at six P M. Anyone have anything else come for the board? Do I have a motion to adjourn?
I'll do that.
Eric, second by Tom. Alls in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries six zero.